Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is Dr. Jennifer Jones, Board President. First item on the agenda is roll call. Scholar representative, Sophia Majors, will you start?
Here. Sophia Majors, Federal Way High School.
Izzy Owens, Topumer High School.
Joan Murphy, District Five.
Lakisha Phillips, Director, District Three.
Trudy Davis, Director, District Four.
Jennifer Jones, Director, District Two.
Dr. Pfeifer, Superintendent.
Yes. Next is a presentation of colors by the Federal Way High School, JROTC. Please rise if you are able. You may now be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I move the Board of Education approve the meeting agenda of November 18, 2025, as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Next item on the agenda is the required approvals agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the required approvals agenda, November 18, 2025, as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is school welcome. Enterprise Elementary School. Dr. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I'm so excited to be here at Enterprise Elementary this evening. I want to thank the staff and the students of Enterprise for hosting all of us. I'm going to invite Principal Alicia Holtzclaw up to do our school welcome. She's going to highlight the strengths and opportunities for growth here at Enterprise. Alicia?
Welcome. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer, and scholar representatives to the Board. Welcome to Enterprise Elementary, home of the Shooting Stars. We are glad to have you here this evening and we're excited to share what's been going on here. Shooting Stars is our motto here and we are excited to share some of the amazing things that we get to do here at Enterprise. We are a school of wonderful, welcoming staff and scholars. Our students thrive on learning in multiple ways and our fifth graders are always excited because one of the things that we've been able to do the last couple of years is support them in going to Islandwood Outdoor School. And this is a unique opportunity that our fifth graders have really been able to go to a place that is very different from what they get to do normally. About 75% of our scholars live in our four big apartment complexes. And so this is a unique opportunity where they've never been camping, they've never spent time in the outdoors, and this is a very unique experience where they get to do that for multiple days and really learn science and nature and spend time outdoors, learning those things with their peers and teachers. We have a really active student PBIS team that gets to spend time working on our school theme of the month, building bulletin boards, creating skits, and leading our school in our themes of the month. And we have a great, a beautiful, beautiful school garden. If you're ever here on our campus, I hope that you get to enjoy it. And we get to participate in the Farm-to-Cafeteria program this year. Our school focus this year is about engaging scholars really actively in their learning and ownership of their learning through goal setting, focus, and discourse, and really getting them actively engaged and owning their learning. We're really actively engaging teachers in that tier-one differentiation. So you'll see here, we have some goal setting. On the right, you'll see that popcorn. Every time we have a class goal, every time students are meeting that goal, the class goal is added to in their bucket. Every class has a different visual of how we're meeting that goal. In the middle, you'll see a teacher working with a small group of students while the rest of the class is working in differentiated groups during a tier-one core lesson. And then in the middle there, you'll see a student goal-setting sheet where students are monitoring their progress towards what their personal goal is. Progress monitoring is done at the individual level, at the class level, and as a whole school. Safety and belonging is really important at Enterprise and we are really welcoming and focused on belonging. And part of that is our rainbow links. Rainbow links is the one way that we, as a whole school, build our community. So instead of having a monetized system where we're buying and selling things, when students are meeting our expectations of solve problems, show respect, and make responsible decisions, students are in rainbow links and they make these beautiful chains that we hang throughout the hallways. And then as we do that, we make spirit days as a community. And so we're building things together instead of monetizing them. We're creating things that we earn each other as a community. As a community, we've also launched this reporter problem link. It's on all scholars' launchpads and students can always report a problem and we can immediately respond to any situation. It can be something that's happened to me, something that I've seen happen to others, or something that I heard that happened. And we've also shared it with families so that students can report if they heard something and they shared it with our family. Parents can then help their student get online from home and they can report a problem from home so that then we can help students with it the next day when they come to school. We're working this year with that sense of ownership to also help students find that ownership in ways that are social, emotionally able to own their learning here, too. So green team in that PBIS student team, recycling team, friendship building, coaching, those older kids going and being coaches at the younger kid recesses. How do we help students be leaders, not just in the classroom, but in other ways as well? Last year, we got to focus on tier-two differentiation. And all of our grade-level teachers met regularly with our coaches, interventionists, literacy development teachers in six-week intervals. All of our students were grouped by data, by skill, and we wrote goals for these groups that were very intentional based on the data and we monitored those regularly. And then, as you can see by our data, we saw some really intentional gains. Our ELA growth went from 100% typical growth to 136% typical growth. 26% of our students made stretch growth the year before, up to 40% of our scholars making stretch growth. In math, we went from 100% typical growth to 110% typical growth. And in our SBA math, we went from 26% of our students making a three or a four to 35% of our students making a three or a four. So we feel like that intentional meeting of students, looking at that data, and really targeting those skills helped close the gap and move students forward regularly throughout the year. Hearing from our families. Our families really appreciate that last year, we heard that they hear from their students. They really appreciated, the students liked having different teachers during those reading groups and having different win teachers and reading at their own levels. The teachers, students really appreciated having that win time, that reading win time. Families do want more information and communication from their upper-level teachers. Our primary teachers are great communicators. We know that. They're great partners with their families. And as kids get older, parents still want more communication. Scholar voice and our scholar advisory. Last year, our scholars gave us great feedback around that tier-two program and differentiation that we did. They really loved our Walk Two program. They loved different projects, they loved having activities, they loved having that time to go to different teachers and learn with different people. They loved knowing what their goal was and working towards it. And they loved knowing exactly what they needed to do, which helps then lead us towards having that ownership goal for this year. Initially, this year, we've only been in school a couple of months, but they are already loving this community. We're loving seeing our friends, we're loving seeing our teachers, and we had some great feedback from them about our Anti-Bullying Assembly in October, which was our launch for our scholar advisory in October. I'm really pleased and excited to welcome Ms. Hernandez's kindergarten class to showcase Albaile de Sepito, the frog dance, a traditional folklore dance that they showcased for us at our Hispanic Heritage Assembly in October. And they will be coming and sharing their dance with you today.
Yes. Thank you so much, Principal Holtzclaw, for bringing us that wonderful report on what you're doing at Enterprise and those marvelous performers. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Schools Can't Do It Alone. Dr. Pfeifer?
Thank you. One of the pillars of our strategic plan is the acknowledgement that schools can't do it alone. And this evening, we have the privilege of highlighting a partner that has made a difference in the lives of our students. Going to ask Jessica Morgan, our Chief of Communications, to spot that, light that partner.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer, and scholar representatives to the Board. Now more than ever, schools can't do it alone, and we would like to show our appreciation for the contribution made by the following organization for the benefit of scholars in our district. Thank you to Watson's Nursery and Garden Sphere for your incredible partnership and generous support for the FWPS Garden Program over the years. Watson's Nursery, with locations in Federal Way and Puyallup, has donated thousands of seed packets over the past three years, with special thanks to Heather Ebner of the Puyallup location for coordinating these donations. The Federal Way branch has also recently contributed Plant Starts to support our scholars. Garden Sphere has been a dedicated partner for the past five years, donating seeds and providing generous discounts for essential garden items like potting soil, cover crop, and plants. Thank you to Gabe and Travis for your ongoing support. Together, your contributions totaling several thousands of dollars worth of seeds and supplies help sustain garden programs across more than 18 school programs, 18 school gardens in our district, giving scholars the opportunity to learn about plant science, sustainability, healthy eating through hands-on experiences. If you're here today, please come forward to be recognized and join us for a photo.
Next item on the agenda is good news announcements. Director Morris?
Good evening. Congratulations to the Thomas Jefferson High School Raider Artificial Intelligence Division, RAID Robotics Team, for their outstanding victory at the 2025 Washington Girls Generation Robotics Competition at Tohoma High School. Scholars and staff who are here today, please come forward to be recognized. The team competed against some of the best in the Pacific Northwest, including last year's world champion. First-time driver Quinn Montry led the team through 12 qualifying matches, five playoff matches, and a best-of-three final, emerging victorious after a nail-biting tiebreaker. Congratulations again on your championship. We are FWPS, proud of your accomplishment.
Next item on the agenda is legislative update. Director Phillips?
I have, I, the superintendent, and I have reached out to our legislators, hopefully to just share our legislative priorities that we have created as a board, talking about our EPNO levy, and that is it for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is board meeting assessment. Five times a year, we have a board director assess the board meeting and provide feedback. For this meeting, Director Phillips will be conducting the assessment. Next item on the agenda is the MTSS Tier-Two Supports Update. Dr. Pfeifer?
Thank you. For the last several years, we've been focused on creating our multi-tiered systems of support, ensuring that all students receive high-quality grade-level core instruction and interventions and extensions when students need additional support or have mastered the standard. This tiered support happens at both the academic and the social-emotional levels. This evening's presentation will provide a brief recap of multi-tiered systems of support, as well as have a more intentional and hyper-focus on tier-two and tier-three interventions that we've been working on across our system. I'm going to hand this over to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Melissa Spencer, and she and the team will provide that overview to you. Dr. Spencer?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, and Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer. Tonight, we'll provide you with a comprehensive overview of the implementation of our MTSS initiatives. We'll provide alignment to our strategic plan, an overview of both academic and social-emotional tiered supports. Multi-tiered systems of support ensures that we are making progress towards all five of our goals. And this work is in alignment with all three sub-ends and with executive limitations, too, in particular. And with that, Dr. Bragnicki will start by unpacking our academic tiered supports for tier one.
Our academic tiered supports begin with universal, high-quality core instruction for all. We are focused on improving our core instruction through the initiatives listed here that we will now unpack. We define high-quality tier-one instruction as focusing on detailed planning, rigorous instructional strategies, and providing ongoing assessment to drive instructional decision-making. Critical to this work is clear backwards planning at the unit level, as well as lesson planning for daily instruction. We focus on how to cognitively and emotionally engage our students in learning, as well as how we can use assessment to understand student learning, as well as engage students in feedback and goal-setting. This slide highlights how we are strengthening tier-one instruction through PSYOP. PSYOP helps all scholars, especially multilinguals and students within IEP, access grade-level content while building academic language. It improves instruction in multiple ways. It clarifies instruction and vocabulary, connects learning to students' background and real-world experiences, promotes structured student talk and higher-order thinking. It ensures scaffolds are built-in so all scholars can access rigorous content. This year, we have an intentional focus on writing across content areas. Reading and writing are intimately connected. Writing matters even at the earliest grades when students are learning to read. Pre-writing carries meaningful signals about decoding, spelling, and later reading comprehension. Handwriting and spelling connect speech to print. Like reading, writing must be taught explicitly. Students must be guided on how to construct sentences, paragraphs, and they should have access to models and exemplars. Writing can help students learn content and make sense of it, why it is one of our key focus areas this year. We provide small-group instruction in both tier-one core instruction, as well as through tier-two skill groups. Tier-one small groups and teacher-led groups that aim to support students in achieving grade-level standards through either reteaching, pre-teaching, or extensions. Assurance teams provide structures for schools to analyze their data and develop interventions to support positive outcomes for our scholars. Given the importance of early literacy and numeracy, this year, we are launching the kindergarten and third-grade assurance teams, which are focused on critical grade-level skills in literacy and math. In addition to our new K and III assurance teams, we are launching our ninth-grade success teams at all comprehensive high schools. As we support our ninth graders transitioning to high school, we will measure the percent of scholars passing all eight classes, the percent of scholars maintaining a 3.0 or higher GPA, Bs or better, scholar sense of belonging, and regular attendance. Teams are setting goals and developing interventions in real time to support ninth-grader success. Sonia Nicholson will now share more about our tier-two and III supports.
Our academics, our academic continuum of supports start with universal supports, but also includes a number of initiatives for implementing tier-two and tier-three supports as well. The next slides will unpack the targeted and intensive supports. Our Literacy Pathways Document is a systematic, data-driven framework for providing interventions in literacy. It matches student data with key interventions and progress monitoring designed to support students' accelerated learning. All scholars receive tiered literacy supports, whether that be for intervention or extension. Our K-5 multilingual Newcomer Academy is a tier-two support designed for students who are new to the country and beginning their English language development journey. The goal of the Newcomer Academy is to accelerate English language development and academic access so scholars can transition successfully into general education settings. Students receive intensive, daily English language development instruction focused on foundational language and literacy skills through small, scaffolded groups that emphasize listening, speaking, reading, and writing. This year, we are implementing a tier-two math curriculum, Enovamath. Enovamath focuses on targeted support aligned to students' readiness levels and provides embedded reasoning and scholar discourse to build fluency in math. Teachers track progress through exit tickets and monitor student growth in cycles, just like in literacy. As part of the middle-school master schedule revisions, all schools have a level-up intervention and extension time. Scholars are grouped based on I-ready diagnostics, common formative assessments, and on-track indicators, ensuring instruction is responsive to individual learning needs. Each session is facilitated by content area teachers with added support from interventionists and counselors to address both academic and social-emotional growth. The design aligns with district data cycles and MTSS tier-two protocols, establishing a cohesive system that connects core instruction, targeted interventions, and data-informed decision-making. This level-up structure is designed to drive measurable academic and engagement gains. The goal is for at least 80% of participating scholars to demonstrate accelerated growth, defined as more than one year of academic progress. In our commitment to ninth-grade success, we offer an extension math and ELA course designed to support scholars enrolled in Algebra I and ELA IX during their freshman year. These extension courses ensure that scholars have ELA and Algebra I every day in support of consistency in learning while providing time to teach or reteach prerequisite skills. Scholars are enrolled in ELA IX literacy seminar and Algebra I and Algebra extension at the same time. Scholars can earn an ELA and math credit for demonstrating mastery of ninth-grade ELA and Algebra I standards, and can earn an elective credit for demonstrating mastery of literacy seminar and Algebra extension. Our multilingual course progression provides tiered language support to our multilingual scholars. These courses are part of our MTSS approach to ensure scholars receive the right level of academic language development support without limiting access to grade-level content or electives. Our first course is Multilingual Social Acculturation, which is designed for newly-arrived scholars. The purpose of this class is to support students in adjusting to the school environment, understanding cultural expectations, and building the socially-emotional readiness necessary for academic success. The second course is the Multilingual Academic Language. This course focuses on building the academic English that students need across all subjects, includes vocabulary, discourse, writing, and reading skills. And the third course is the Multilingual Achievement Class. That serves as a tier-two intervention for scholars who have developed basic conversational English but need targeted supports to be successful in grade-level coursework. This course is particularly beneficial for long-term English learners and students demonstrating academic gaps based on data. Our district support team will focus on high-quality instruction with a focus on mathematics. Here, we differentiate our professional development and support based on both achievement and growth data. Much like multi-tiered systems of support for students, the district support team provides a core level of support for all schools, and then layers additional support to targeted and comprehensive schools so that they can accelerate student learning. While we are implementing tier-two academic supports, this year, we are in the building phase of our tier-three academic supports. This is inclusive of structures at the building level, as well as curricular resources, progress monitoring, and family communication. As a reminder, tier-three supports do not equal special education services and encompasses the whole child, focusing on academics, attendance, and socially-emotional needs of the students. We are seeing early promising growth from our work in 2425 by seeing an increase in the percent of students meeting their stretch growth. Research has shown that when students meet their stretch growth two years in a row, they close the achievement gap to perform at grade level. Sineigh Wright Wilkins will now share information about our social-emotional tiered continuum of supports.
MTSS supports social-emotional learning and behavior by using a multi-tiered framework to provide universal, targeted, and intensive support. Tier-one establishes a positive school-wide climate and foundational sales skills for all scholars, while tier-two and tier-three provide more intensive, individualized interventions for scholars with higher needs. This proactive, data-driven system ensures that all scholars receive the social, emotional, and behavioral support that they need to succeed. Our social-emotional tier supports include positive behavior supports through PBIS, social-emotional curriculum implementation, and a systemic focus on attendance. The focus of these three items work to create a positive and inclusive school environment where scholars feel safe, supported, and engaged. As shared earlier, the MTSS is a framework that ensures all scholars receive the right level of support for both academic and behavioral needs. The integration of sale and behavior into the same system as academics works to create a holistic approach of support. MTSS ensures equitable access to interventions based on scholar needs and promotes proactive strategies as opposed to reactive discipline. Students who feel connected and supported are more likely to engage and succeed. Sale is embedded in our general education curriculum and taught to all scholars in grades K through 12. This is done by using the second-step curriculum in elementary and character-strong curriculum in middle and high schools. We also have a web and link crew to support scholar transitions to the next levels of grades six and nine. Web and link crew help to provide welcoming and inclusive activities, engage, welcome and inclusive activities, engage scholars in building relationships among their classmates, and focuses on scholars' well-being and mindfulness skills. Web and link crew engage older scholars in supporting the newest scholars at their level by providing leadership opportunities, both at the beginning of the year and throughout the year through advisory lessons, making the transition to middle and high school much easier. For the second year in a row, we have expanded our breakfast-in-the-classroom initiative at the elementary school. Here, scholars eat breakfast in their classroom, working to increase the number of scholars eating prior to learning, as well as supporting the building of relationships among classmates. Not only has this worked to improve on-time attendance, but we have also seen a decrease in our morning discipline for schools that have implemented. While breakfast-in-the-classroom is an elementary initiative, several secondary schools also offer second- offer second-chance breakfast for secondary scholars. This works to ensure that they increase their engagement and their learning as well. In addition to Breakfast in the Classroom at elementary and Lincoln Web at secondary, for the fourth year in a row, we have launched our First Days of School framework as another tier-one universal support, all which created the conditions for scholars to build foundational tier-one sale competencies, followed by behavioral expectations, and engage in rigorous learning. Alongside our tier-one core supports that benefit all scholars, we offer tier-two supports designed to help scholars strengthen their social, emotional, and behavioral skills. These proactive supports include small-group sessions with counselors, social skill development groups, a check-in-checkout system to build positive connections, and mentoring opportunities through partnerships with our community-based organizations. For scholars who benefit from additional support, we offer personalized programs that build on their strengths and address their individual needs in tier-three. These include tailored behavior support plans and responsive strategies designed to help each scholar thrive. This slide shows how we also leverage scholar voice and sale from within. Scholars aren't just participants; they also co-design activities and initiatives, lead professional learning for staff, and facilitate restorative circles and peer mediation. Through advisory councils and ambassador programs, scholars have a former role in shaping their school culture with sale. We also use surveys and listening sessions to ensure that their voices guide their decisions. An example of this work is the Todd Beamer Ninth Grade Cafes, where staff were able to connect and hear from almost every ninth grader about their ninth-grade experience. Not only were scholars able to connect with a trusted adult during this process, they were also able to increase connectivity and a sense of belonging, as well as discuss their current grades, attendance, and GPA, all working to create a better environment for their learning. We focus our MTSS efforts on social-emotional learning because we know that sale has several significant benefits to scholars, including improved attendance, stronger connections at the building level, and ultimately enhanced learning. Additionally, the skills learned through sale are not just beneficial in school but essential for lifelong learning and career success. Some of the growth we have seen as a result of this work include 90% of our scholars having no exclusionary discipline, 30% of our scholars increasing their breakfast participation that's providing better attendance, and a 4% increase of our sense of belonging data for our secondary scholars. We have also seen an increase in the number of families that are engaging in our family events. Dr. Spencer will now close us out with our next steps.
Some of our key next steps include professional development through instructional rounds for our principals, building level PSYOP professional development plans, implementing our district walkthrough tool to monitor for implementation of focused instructional strategies, our district support team at the elementary and middle school level, and continuing our improvement networks in attendance and discipline. Thank you for your attention this evening as we shared our implementation of MTSS during the 25-26 school year. As we've shared previously, this is a multi-year implementation, and I believe you'll see our progress from previous years in this presentation. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Very comprehensive. On the one-year progress, I know at one time, the federal government was kind of keeping a close watch on the schools. And is that a requirement still that the students must meet a one-year for a school district to pass approval? I mean, at one time, when we had like core curriculum, it was really pretty tough, and schools really worked hard to see that the school met that criteria. Is that in place still? Must not be, if you're looking at me.
Well, it's nothing to do with the federal government. That is coming directly out of the Office of Superintendent for Public Instruction, OSPI. Each one of our schools has a school improvement plan, and as a district, we have an L cap plan. And those plans designate goals. Progress towards those goals are multiple measures, measure progress towards those goals. And schools that are not making adequate progress get additional support and help. Yeah, and from our district support team, we also concentrate additional efforts at those school levels as well, if that's what you... Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation.
Actually, you probably didn't see my hand up, but I had some comments. If it's okay, this is Director Davis. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, just listening to that presentation, I was writing some notes, and I realized, you know, and I wanted to just emphasize the fact that, you know, just in these few couple, you know, these couple of months since we, the kids have been in school, I've been out and visited the schools, because that's what we get to do as board members. And I did see where the reading and writing, there is an emphasis on that this year, and it's making a difference. I mean, just, you know, looking at what the kids are doing, I can see that that's what they're working on. The other thing is, you know, visiting the schools, like I said, we get to see things that are presented to us firsthand. I got to observe the level-up intervention. So, the kids aren't feeling like they're at a special education class; they just feel like they passed over into another class as normal, and they're participating in that timeframe, just like they would if they were in their normal class, and they're just getting that extra help. So, I saw that firsthand, and that's a good deal, so I'm glad I was able to see that. The Ninth Grade Cafe at Todd Beamer, that sounds like it probably yielded a lot of good information, so I'm interested in seeing how, getting some more information about that. But, you know, it's been at least a year now that we've been seeing the MTSS in action. If you are visiting the schools, like we get to do, and so we get to see those things in place, the practices in place, the small groups and all of that, so we get to see those things happening. I love the First Day of School framework where they do the check-ins and check-outs and the mentorship, so I'd like to get a little bit more information about that later. And so, you know, that's our job. This is what we do. We are here to monitor what's going on, the progress, what's going on with the district, and I see it happening, and here we are, it's just November, and for this year and this past year, it's just, there's been a lot of progress. So, the questions that we should have are really follow-up to me, just follow-up questions, maybe, because the things that the district said they were going to do, they're doing, and the new things that are coming up, then, of course, we could have some follow-up questions with that. But I'm just impressed with the fact that, as, you know, shorter time that we've had, that the kids have had in school, that they've had to work with teachers, principals, and all of that, and, you know, we have the learning improvement officers going out and all of the other staff, you know, all the different groups that are going out and doing things, there's so much is happening, and it's being adapted, and we can see it happening. So, I'm impressed, and I look forward to seeing more progress. I'm happy with the progress, and I just can't imagine that we're going to go any way but forward. And so, I'm good with that. I'm really happy with what I've been seeing. So, thank you for the presentation that also, you know, reinforced the fact that what you say is what I'm seeing. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Director Davis. Next item on the agenda is the EPNO renewal levy presentation. Dr. Pfeiffer.
All right. The final presentation of our EPNO this evening. As you know, in February of 2026, we will be going out to our community for the renewal of our EPNO levy. The EPNO levy funds help bridge the gap between that which the state funds us and actually what it costs to operate a school district. I want to, once again, both acknowledge and thank the investment of time that the board has made in learning and growing their knowledge about the EPNO levy to understand the funding structure as well as the formula as determined by the state. You really have put in a lot of time, and I want to acknowledge and appreciate you around that. I've asked Rob Bryant, our Chief Finance Officer, to provide what we believe will be the last, we might do some SNPs here and there, but the last formal overview of our EPNO, recognizing that this evening is the second reading of the resolution as is legally required. Rob.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer. Good evening, Board President Dr. Jones, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Pfeffer. Tonight, I am pleased to provide an update regarding the renewal of the district's Educational Programs and Operations Levy, or EPNO levy. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of the board's discussions and planning completed so far regarding the EPNO levy, to discuss the district's programs and services supported by the levy, and why it is important for the district's financial stability, to review details about the levy renewal process, and to discuss next steps including tonight's second reading and subsequent adoption of the resolution, as well as remaining steps leading up to the February 10, 2026 special election. The goals outlined in the strategic plan serve as a central foundation supporting the EPNO levy. Over the past several months, the school board has engaged in a thorough and detailed planning for the levy. In these many meetings and sessions, board members have reviewed the district's current financial status and long-range budget projections. They've discussed program impacts tied to levy funding, examined multiple levy scenarios, tax implications, and community considerations to ensure that the levy proposal is responsible and sustainable, provided ongoing guidance and direction, helping to refine the scope and planning of the levy, and the board has engaged in transparent deliberation around the levy, asking rigorous questions and exploring implications. Collectively, this work reflects the board's deep due diligence and commitment to presenting a levy proposal that is fiscally sound, educationally supported, and responsive to the community. The EPNO levy's importance is reflected in many ways, including that it provides essential funding for our staff, programs, and day-to-day operations that the state does not fully cover. The EPNO levy bridges the gap between what the state funds and what it actually costs to run our schools. Revenue comes from local property taxes and is collected annually, and every dollar stays right here in Federal Way, directly supporting our schools and students. And it is a renewal levy, not a new tax, and importantly, our community has consistently supported the EPNO renewal since 1980, demonstrating strong, long-term commitment to our students. As a reminder of how the district's levy authority is determined, under state law, a school district's levy authority is the lesser of two separate formulas: $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed property value, or a per-student limit that is set annually by the state, approximately $3,247 per student in 2025. This limit determines the maximum amount a district can collect. For Federal Way public schools, the lesser of is the $2.50 rate multiplied by the district's assessed value. So, for example, in calendar year 2026, and using the lesser-of formula, our levy authority is currently estimated to be around $68 million. The EPNO levy makes up approximately 10% of the district's operating budget. For 2025-26, the budgeted amount for the levy is $46.3 million. This is the primary source of truly flexible local funding that bridges the gap and can be used to address specific needs that aren't fully covered by state funding. Without the funding generated from the renewal levy, the district would need to reduce or eliminate programs and services that are currently funded with levy dollars. Again, and in short, EPNO levy dollars are what closes the gap left by the lack of state funding. For Federal Way public schools, under high-quality teaching and learning, examples of what the levy supports include such things as teachers and classroom support staff, health, counseling, and nursing services, substitutes, staff professional development, custodians and maintenance staff, classroom technology, educational programs, curriculum, and materials. For special education, the levy supports staff such as speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and audiologists. For transportation, the levy supports such things as cost for special riders, fuel costs, and even bus aids. For athletics and activities, the levy supports 100% of the cost of our athletic programs. And under security, the levy funds most of the safety and security staff in our buildings, and much more. In addition to the many examples provided on the previous slide, examples of other programs and services supported by the levy include teaching classrooms staff beyond the levels funded by the state, mental health and other counseling services, college and career readiness and advanced programming, including Advanced Placement, IB, and Cambridge. The levy is also the source of funding for those programs that are often seen as defining a good school experience beyond just academics, such as athletics, arts, music, drama, and other extracurriculars. The state's funding model doesn't cover these programs that are vital in keeping our students engaged. The levy funding also supports those things needed to keep our schools functional, clean, safe, warm, and operationally sound, including custodians, maintenance, ground staff, and even utility costs. As a result of the board's work and many discussions, tonight, the board will be doing a second reading of the resolution that will authorize the levy to be placed on the February 10, 2026 ballot. This slide shows the dollar amounts for the four-year levy that voters will be asked to approve, along with the corresponding estimated tax rates. It is important to note that voters are being asked to approve the fixed dollar amounts identified in the column labeled "total levy amount for collection" rather than a tax rate. For example, the district would collect $71.4 million in 2027, based on an estimated rate of $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value, with amounts increasing each year through 2030, when the district would collect $82.6 million. It is also important to note that the estimated tax rates assume a conservative 5% assessed valuation increase each year of the levy. Based on these amounts and rates, the estimated monthly taxes on a home valued at $500,000 in calendar year 2027 would be $104 a month. This is an estimated increase of $31 a month over the current calendar year 2026 estimates. This chart shows the total school district tax rate over time and how different voter-approved measures contributed to that total. Looking back, the rates from 2015 to 2018, which occurred before the McClery lawsuit decision, were above $6 per $1,000 of assessed value. Following that, rates dropped and have remained in the mid-$3 range with small year-to-year fluctuations. Looking ahead, you'll see the projections show an increase starting in 2027 to help meet the ongoing school funding needs. Even with this adjustment, rates continue in that mid-$3 range. To summarize the previous slides, the EPNO levy is foundational to the financial health of the school district. The levy is how we fund essential day-to-day operations that the state does not fully support. The levy is a renewal, not a new tax, continuing the local support that's already in place. Our current levy runs through the end of 2026, so this levy will ensure financial continuity and stability. The renewal measure is scheduled for the February 10, 2026 special election, and, as stated earlier, the levy fills the gap between state funding and the true cost of operating our schools. It allows us to maintain the program, services, and people that make a meaningful difference for our students every day. Tonight, the board will be doing a second reading and subsequent adoption of Resolution 2025-12. The resolution is the legal requirement that sets the election date, defines the maximum levy amounts to be collected for each specified year of the levy, and states the estimated tax rate for each year. The resolution also provides the official ballot proposition language and authorizes the district's participation in the voters' pamphlet. Following the formal adoption of the resolution, it must then be filed with King County elections by December 12 in order to be included on the February 10 ballot. Ballots are mailed to voters on January 21st, ballot drop boxes open on January 22nd, and election day is set for February 10, 2026, with the results being certified 10 days later on February 20. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you for that presentation. As you mentioned, this is number 11 of these presentations, so I think we're pretty well-versed in all the different important components of the EPNO renewal levy. So, are there any further questions, board members? So are there any further questions, board members?
I am looking at page 11, and so much information has been provided to us, and I really have grasped it. However, page 11 is very disconcerting, and that is where we were at $6 and $5, and then down to $3, and that was because of the McClery? And can someone please specify specifically what is their justification for that exactly other than we don't have the tax base here, and that's the reason why we dropped so severely? No, maybe I just don't understand this page 11.
Yes. So as we know, before the McClery decision was made, there was a different funding structure in place for how districts were able to levy certain amounts. So at that point, the districts were able to levy higher amounts, and the state funded a lower portion. After the McClery, that also changed how much districts were, they capped how much districts were able to levy, and at the same time, they changed such things as regionalization, local effort assistance, and that sort of thing. Dr. Pfeifer, I don't know if there's anything else?
I don't know if it's helpful, but I think for me, I like hearing the word lawsuit. So a lawsuit happened. A group of advocates came together and said, hey, it's in the Constitution for Washington that education is its highest responsibility. You're not funding education correctly. So the lawsuit went to court, and they won. So that's what it means by McClery. The judge said, you're right, we're not funding schools correctly. So that's why there was a big shift in laws. That's where the big drop is, because then the legislature had to go back and change how they were doing it. So they changed all this stuff to try and get in compliance with the court, and the court was like, okay, whatever. So then we have this stretch of time where then the legislature was like, oh no, this isn't actually working. It might be getting worse. And so then they were like, let's change it a little bit, but not too much. Then we're going to change it a little bit more, but not too much. And then that got us to our current problem. And so now, here we are, the laws have changed, but they're not great, and you have multiple districts, I think there's eight, that are in binding conditions because they can't pay their bills. So now the legislature's like, uh-oh. I'm assuming at some point, there's going to be another lawsuit. But for tonight, what we're going to do is just pass this EPNO levy. We're going to be so grateful that our community has supported us, and we're going to stick with what we can collect per the state law, knowing that it's still not enough, and the systems that they got going aren't working. So it's like, ooh, it's like a Band-Aid instead of a tourniquet.
But we're $16 billion in the hole in the state, and they don't seem to be able to rectify this? That's troubling.
That is a great question. So that is, yes, the state budget is still identifying their hole, but yes, they are, and they're kind of aware of the education problem. And it's a short session, so I'm just going to be honest, I don't know that, they don't really do a lot of fixes in the short session, which is devastating. And again, eight districts already down, more on their way. So it's probably not going to get fixed this year, but we're hoping that we have some work groups, by we, I mean, Washingtonians, the state, have some work groups that are like, let's meet again and try and come up with another way to do this. And that's still a year off, which is very disappointing. So this is kind of a Band-Aid, and not a good one, because other districts can get more money than we're going to get. So here's our Band-Aid, need a tourniquet, and then you and I are going to talk to our 30th representatives and say, for the love of everything education, please come up with another plan.
Very clearly stated that the situation we're in is such that here is what we can do as a community to help support our schools and our scholars, and the things that are so important for our young people, we talk about the robotics, and the athletics, and the orchestra, and the award-winning different programs that we have here, would not happen if we did not, as a community, come together and support these very important programs. And one of the things that we notice when we go into the schools, as Director Davis said, we see the evidence of what happens when you have all of these staff working with our young people. When we see people, when we see the paraeducators, when we see the support staff, when we see the young people walking up and high-fiving the security personnel, we know that this is what makes it possible to have a functioning school system, where things are going the way we want them to go. And the young people are saying things like, we have friends at school, and we love our teachers, right? That's what we want, and that's what we can get if we continue to, as a community, come together and support our young people and our educators with this levy renewal.
Dr. Jones, Director Davis has her hand up.
Go ahead.
Actually, that one's from before, but I will just kind of, I just want to piggyback on what Director Phillips and Dr. Jones just said. You know, it's always been communities taking care of communities. I mean, I'm old enough to know that, or remember that it seems like whenever the schools needed something, it was just this rallying around of communities making it happen. I didn't know a lot about what the government did for schools back then, but I do know that communities always seem to just come together and make things happen for schools if they were lacking in something that they needed. And so when I look at this levy, it just feels that same way. And for all these years, since the 80s, that our city has done this renewal over and over, they really are invested in our schools, and I thank them for that, and I am definitely going to be appreciative of what they'll do come February.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the EPNO Renewal Levy Resolution, and I will read that now. Resolution number 2025-12, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Federal Way School District Number 210, King County, Washington, providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the district at a special election to be held on February 10, 2026, a ballot proposition to determine whether excess taxes should be levied to pay part of the cost of the educational programs and operation support of the district. Proposition number one, Federal Way School District Number 210, renewal of educational programs and operations levy. The Board of Directors of Federal Way Public Schools adopted Resolution 2025-12 concerning a proposition renewing an expiring levy for education. This proposition would authorize the district to levy the following excess taxes on all taxable property within the district, providing support for educational programs, staff, and operations not funded, not fully funded by the state, including teachers, classroom support staff, nurses, counselors, transportation, technology, safety/security staff, college/career readiness, athletics, arts/ music. In the collection year 2027, the levy rate of per $1,000 of assessed value is $2.50, yielding a levy amount of $71,408,000. In the collection year 2028, the levy rate of per $1,000 of assessed value would be $2.50, yielding a levy amount of $74,978,000. In collection year 2029, the levy rate of $0.25 would yield a levy amount of $78,727,000. In collection year 2030, the levy rate of $2.50 would yield a levy amount of $82,663,000. Should this proposition be approved? Next item on the agenda is the approval of Resolution 2025-12, EPNO Renewal Levy. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve Resolution 2025-12, EPNO Renewal Levy as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is school reports. As we have three scholar representatives, they will alternate reporting at each meeting. This meeting, we have Izzy Owens and Sophia Majors reporting. Izzy, would you like to begin?
Good evening, everyone. Things are looking strong across our schools, with students engaged in academics, leadership, and community activities. At Sequoia Middle School, routines and policies, including the phone policy, are being enforced consistently, and the new seventh-period computer system is running smoothly. At Todd Berman High School, students participate in SATs and PSATs, and advisory sessions are helping them stay organized as they prepare for student-like conferences. At Evergreen Middle School, leadership students attend camp to learn strategies for connecting with peers and planning for a school dance, and the second sports season is underway. Thomas Jefferson High School is buzzing with activity, including SLCs, Spirit of Giving, and Winter Wishes, Newcomer Club, trunk-or-treat concerts, and math competitions. The math team celebrated multiple wins at the Skyview Invitational and is raising funds for a national competition this summer. Academic supports are helping students stay on track and build skills for success. For example, my school hosted a freshman cafe, as mentioned in the slides from earlier, where new students met adult mentors, learned about high school expectations, and practiced organizational and study strategies, giving them a head start on their academic journey throughout high school. Across all schools, advisory sessions, grade checks, mentorship, leadership programs, and enrichment throughout clubs and competitions provided opportunities for students to get personalized guidance, practice important skills, and stay connected to their peers and teachers. And I think a really big thing is students need to get involved in school, but it's always, how can we get them involved in clubs, sports, and other opportunities within the school? And I think that the freshman cafe did a really great job of making students step outside of their comfort zone and try to get involved within the school. And some opportunities for growth and how we could support them is increased standardized testing participation. We could encourage participation by sharing tips during advisory, giving students reminders about test dates, or highlighting the benefits of completing these assessments, and then pacing teacher-assigned work. We could support students by helping them prioritize assignments, offering optional study sessions during advisory or lunches, and encouraging students to ask for help if they feel overwhelmed. Supporting newcomers and struggling students, we could expand mentorship programs, run small-group workshops, and pair students with peers or staff members to provide extra guidance and regular check-ins.
Thank you, Izzy. Sophia?
Hi, good evening. So across the schools in these areas, students reported a strong focus on community-building events, academic preparation, and increasing involvement in school activities. At Career Academy at Truman, ASB is working to organize fundraising groups and improve student store inventory, and students noted that fights have decreased. Federal Way Open Doors hosted a well-attended Fall Family Night with games, food, and music, and they're developing a student pantry to support families who need food assistance. Internet Academy students recently completed their monthly progress reports for Weeks 1 to 10, submitted panorama surveys, and participated in onboarding meetings in SLCs. Middle Schools shared that the last few weeks have been filled with spirit weeks, field trips, and new sports seasons. Lakota Middle School held a multi-day spirit week, a pep assembly, and fall festival, while also sharing concerns about bathroom and water pass policies. Students there also prepared conference slides and learned information about upcoming basketball and wrestling seasons. TAF at Sohali, students attended two field trips, one focused on leadership at the TAF building, and another introducing young women and students who identify as bi to construction and trade careers. Zaca Joaia Middle School reported a decrease in fights, stronger student participation in school events, and successful athletic competitions, including district wins in cross-country and softball. Students are also signing up for girls' basketball, wrestling, and applying for Nighthawk Ambassador positions. High schools are busy preparing for performances, sports seasons, and student-led conferences. At Federal Way High School, the student store had reopened with high demand. Clubs are running fundraisers, and the theater program is preparing for its performance of The Diary of Anne Frank. Students are also getting ready for winter sports, such as bowling, gymnastics, wrestling, swimming, basketball, and flag football. Ling Crew continues to support freshmen, and the senior class is raising money at football games. Across these schools, students shared that participation is increasing, behavior is improving, and they are steadily preparing for SLCs and winter activities. At Federal Way High School, the school that I go to, academic supports include teachers helping during class by checking in on students and making sure they understand the lesson, and help rooms outside of class, where students can go to work in a quiet space, ask questions, and get extra support if they need it. What is going well is that teachers are willing to offer time before school, after school, or during advisory and lunch, so students can get help in different ways. To better support scholars in their academic journey, schools could make helproom schedules easier to find, offer more organized tutoring for difficult subjects, and communicate more clearly about missing work or confusing assignments. These changes would help students stay on track and feel more confident in their classes.
Thank you, Sophia. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent Comments. Dr. Pfeifer?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank our families for showing up consistently at our student-led conferences. November 6th and 7th is when we held them. We had high levels of participation by our families. I also want to give out a shout-out to our students for preparing for those conferences, as well as our staff working in connection and in partnership with our families. Of course, they're focused during our student-led conferences around academic strengths, growth opportunities, and the overall goals for the year. Our most recent Fall Scholar Chronicle paper newsletter hit mailboxes last week, so make sure to check that out. It highlights the district's things that we're working on, provides information, including like a recap of our launch of the school year, our completed construction projects from the most recent bond, and how we're supporting scholar transitions with peer-to-peer programs, kind of like what you heard this evening. On November 8th, we held our first math bonanza competition at Thomas Jefferson High School, where Fedgeaway Public Schools scholars competed on teams individually and against students from other school districts. We're proud of these students showcasing their brilliance, and keep an eye out, because we'll be spotlighting those in our social media. And then this past week, like you just heard, Decatur High School and Fedgeaway High School began showing their fall theater productions, The Curious Savage and The Diary of Anne Frank. Both productions highlight the incredible talents and the creativity of our young people. One of the attendees who attended said, I just saw Diary of Anne Frank tonight, top-notch production with a talented cast, interesting set design, and moving subject matter. It was very well done. So I wanted to make sure that I gave them a shout-out. Shows are set to conclude at the end of the week, and I encourage anyone that can to attend. Of course, it is National Native American Heritage Awareness Month. As you may know, Fedgeaway Public Schools has a strong relationship with our local indigenous tribes, and we've worked hard to incorporate native education into our curriculum pre-K through 12. And this month, we're proud to share some voices from our native young people. Be on the lookout for those posts on social media. Tomorrow is Education Support Professionals Day, and Friday is Substitute Educators Day. Both of these roles are critical to helping our schools run smoothly, and I want to take the time to give thanks and appreciation to the individuals who support our students' continuous learning. And we're hosting another turkey giveaway this Saturday, November 22nd, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Decatur High School to help Fedgeaway Public Schools' families in need. This event is first come, first served, and is a drive-through event only. We'll be giving away 400 turkeys and... We'll be giving away 400 turkeys and turkey dinners. So I'm also looking forward to spending time with all of you at our statewide WASDA conference, where we will be strengthening our governance and leadership model together. This will be, and where all of you will be recognized as a Washington State School Board of Distinction on Thursday evening. And this marks the 10th year of that recognition. So on behalf of all of us, our staff, students, and families, thank you for your dedication and commitment. And then before I close, as I shared in last week's e-newsletter, I want to remind our students and families that as we enter the winter months, that they are not alone. And this time of year can bring both joy and added stress. And it's important to know that support is available on our district website. You will find resources for families seeking assistance with food and other essential needs. Our goal is to ensure every scholar and family in Fedgeaway Public Schools feels cared for, connected, and supported.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer. Next item on the agenda is school board comments, beginning with Director Morris.
Thank you. I really don't have any comments for this evening. I appreciate all the presentations. I imagine most of you know this will probably be my last full public school board meeting. I want to thank all of you for the kindness and support that you've provided to me as Dr. Pfeiffer's cabinet. It's been a very interesting adventure. But I'm looking forward to passing that baton to another capable individual. And I will hope that you receive him with dignity and respect. He's got some tough shoes to fill, and I'm not talking about mine. I'm just talking about the role of school board director in representing the voters that put him in this office. And so, once again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Morris. Director Phillips?
Yeah, mine short, just thanks for the presentations. And I did want to highlight, as a parent with kids in the district, I do get the emails and it was nice to hear the phone call about, hey, we're helping families and we've got 400 in coming through. So just a big kudos to everybody for their hard work because we end up serving a lot of people as we move into kind of the fall and winter season. So I appreciate your work in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Phillips. Director Davis?
Yes, so the first thing that I wanted to mention was, I'm so proud of our student advisors to the board. And I'm glad that we made that decision to hold on to our, you know, student advisors another year. And I really wanted to let Sophia know that I'm so proud of her. She just sounds so competent in her reporting now. She's grown and I'm glad we were able to keep her another year. So I am excited about that. And I'm excited for our other, for Izzy and our other, you know, student advisor, just for them to get a chance to go to the WASDA conference and meet up with other kids that are a part of their district's board, student advisories. And then, of course, you know, thanking Enterprise for allowing us to be there. It's always great to be in the schools and see parents and students. And then, of course, thankful for all of these presentations, you know, when we hear it at our work studies, but then when we hear it again, sometimes it just reenterates something that we may have missed. And so that's always good to get that second, you know, hearing or third hearing of something. And so that's it for me.
Thank you, Director Davis. Director Murphy?
Well, first of all, I want to wish Director Morris best of luck in his new endeavors. And he will be missed with all of his thought-provoking questions and inquiries that he has presented to our board to reflect on. And I'm looking forward to working with the new director, Eric Gollings. He comes with a lot of talent and experience in the district. And I want to congratulate Dr. Trudy Davis for re-winning her election. And I look forward to a new year. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Murphy. I also want to thank Principal Holt's Claw for hosting us here and giving us that delightful presentation from the kindergartners. It's always nice to see the littlest scholars outperforming with their little hearts out. I was really interested to hear about the outdoor school. That sounds like a wonderful opportunity for the young people. The school garden, very important to show young people where food comes from and how to get it to the table. That's just so important to engage the young people in that kind of active learning. I like the idea of having the visual rewards for each school, each classroom, to see them achieving their goals. Young people like to see that they're making progress. I really appreciated hearing about the PBIS student team, about the students are engaged in helping one another in supporting their behavioral goals. The older students reaching out and coaching and mentoring the younger students, also very important. And I was also really impressed to see, and we do see this when we go into the classrooms, the data collecting and monitoring for making improvements. That sounds really dry, but then we actually see it happening when we see each young person sitting and working on their own individual work and gaining knowledge in their own way, on their computers or with the instructor or with a teacher, with the paraeducators or whoever may be helping them. We see that actually happening. And then we can see those improvements being made in that data monitoring. And finally, I'm just really going to encourage the community to support our EPNO levy when that comes to a vote because that is going to be vitally important to supporting all of these efforts that we see happening in the schools. It wouldn't happen without the support of the community. So I really appreciate that. And next item on the agenda is public comment. And we do have one. And I'll read the statement. Federal Way Public Schools Board, sorry. Oh, they're not, they just submitted. Okay, they submitted it for us to look at. Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's been submitted. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda then is the board meeting assessment. Director Phillips?
For board directors, for our November assessment, you know, when I first got on the board, I was like, why are we getting assessments? This is very difficult and it felt like such an education thing. But now I'm used to it and proud of it. I think this supports us in getting our designation and our work. So one of the things we have is board goal one, which is around policy governance quality improvement. And in this meeting, I can say, it looks like all of us got updates of our board policies. So that kind of gives us some evidence that clearly we're engaged in the policy governance quality improvement. And it was also mentioned, it sounds like, I mean, Director Morris, are you not coming to the WASDA conference? You can get one more PD weekend in? Okay, you're in on Friday. So including with Director Morris, you can see that deep commitment to policy governance quality improvement because we're all going to be going to training and there's quite a few opportunities to continue to learn about what policy governance is and why it's important to us. And then our next board goal was superintendent support. And we can show that support by being cohesive, showing up to our meetings, being present. It looks like everybody was prepared for the meeting. Everybody was engaged in the meeting. We were consistent with our comments and supporting of our superintendent. I'm Director Davis. I really appreciate you mentioning like the various visits and how it connects to our meeting, which would directly align with kind of that superintendent support. So I feel like we are moving in the right direction and working like we're supposed to. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing. And with that, we are adjourned.